Now reconvene into open session, we need a motion. Thank you Susan. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in open session. Are there any changes to the order of business for tonight?
None.
Alright, hearing none, we'll stick with our original agenda. Public appearances, do we have anyone? Alright, that takes us to our consent agenda. And do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. We need a second. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Alright, the consent agenda is approved as presented in our agenda and board docs, thank you. That takes us to recognitions. Are there any recognitions this evening? Susan.
You're gonna do, or maybe you should go first. But you're gonna do the bronze.
I was, go ahead.
You go.
I was not, no.
Oh, okay. So, Taylor Perry, and I think some of you may already know about this, is recognized by the Wisconsin RTI Center in Behavior at the France although for their work toward implementing a school-wide framework that according to national research needs to improve student outcomes.
Thank you. Any other recognitions tonight?
Oh, I, I'm gonna do, I'm sorry. And it, it may feel a little personal, but every board member should be involved in this. There was an incident in the Monona community that dramatically affected a significant, significant number of our students, in particular one of our school, as well as outline. And I actually sent Dan a note pretty early in the morning, and Angie was already aware of that. And I actually went up to the school that morning on parent request and was out making sure all the kids got on the bus, because the kids had to go through a pretty significant area of a community to get to the bus. And the, I cannot thank the staff and administration enough for their incredible support of these kids. They felt pretty comfortable and there was actually, some of our children were taken out at night in front of possible gunfire under SWAT shields. And our schools stepped up and these kids felt very, very comfortable. And then, the only thing I would suggest in the recognition piece is just continue to let the parents know what kind of support they need, when you see that there's an issue, because we've talked about that in the neighborhood. It was incredibly impressive, and I don't think unless you saw it, were involved in it, you know how kind of horrible it was. So, thanks.
I'd just like, like to add to Susan's first recognition, I couldn't recall if we had discussed, I've done this at the board meeting or not, but actually now I remember we did it at the staff recognition and may not have done at the board meeting. Did we? Okay, so with the bronze achievement for the RTI, so actually all three of our elementary schools achieved that status.
Thank you. Alright, that takes us to our correspondence and announcements. Anyone have announcements this evening?
So, am I the only one that's getting these letters? What the heck? I'm gonna turn off my email. I, I actually received three parent requests for us to evaluate, starting on a Friday, school on Friday before Labor Day. When it's, it's one thing if it's Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, they're gonna start, but they wanted us to always think about that, because they all wanna be on vacation, which. And then, the other is, and I think Dan's already about that, is a request to renew or reactivate the wellness committee. And I've had several parents who have, who would like to be involved, and I've sent Dan the names, so. Thanks for already being on there.
Okay. Alright, anyone else checking in? Alright, that takes us to our administrative reports, and tonight we'll begin with our assistant principal activities director Jeff Schreiner. Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Just to give a year-end report for our athletics and then also our activities and clubs. For a number of years, we've been doing the year-end report for athletics. And looking back at the document, we continue to, I'll start with the athletics first. Continue to collect a lot of archive pieces, but it also kinda captures that moment in time for that school year, which I, I think is important for an archive document like this. When you look at the report, and I believe you guys have that probably looking at now. The first page, it kinda shows the size of the schools that we're competing against in the Badger Conference, both north and south. It's kind of trendy, but you can see the enrollment increase or decrease through the years and stuff, and you can kinda see where some schools are outpacing others and stuff. That's a tracking point for the coaches in our conference and stuff, and we continue to kinda keep pace as a large school in our Badger Conference on the south side. As the document reads on, I'll jump right away to the last page. The last page is our conference standings. I put it on the last page because in the bigger picture of things, that's where I feel it should probably go. It doesn't really matter our place of finish, but in the, in the front page stuff, that's what a lot of people feel is, that's the emphasis of where we finish and stuff. But if you talk to the coaches, even parents and the student athletes, it deserves the last page recognition, because the hard work that goes into it is kind of in the front part of it. So jumping back into the document now, you take a look at it, we take a look at our accolades. State and conference championships, football was the state runner-up last year. Was a heck of a way to start our school year with, you know, the heartbeat of our student section, our staff and everything. So they take us deep into the tournament, take us to Camp Randall, it was a good ride for us and stuff there. Our boys went back it up in the, in the winter season with another state title. Our conference championships, boys cross-country got on the board in the fall of the year by making it to state, but also winning the conference championship. Volleyball pulled another conference championship their way, and again, boys swimming, girls track and boys track. So again, we're well represented not only in our conference level, but we also have those sports that are making the bigger scene in the WIA tournaments, and getting Monona Grove right where it needs to be with our traditions. So it continues on through our accolades. The next section is our all-conference selections, and again, we're representing a lot of student athletes that are making it on the all-conference page in a lot of different sports and stuff. If the next section is our significant accomplishments, these are kids that are doing things alongside of just within their sport, either they're signing letter of intent with other schools, or they're excelling within their sports and stuff. The bigger section, I think that is a real impact, and I'm getting some good feedback from our coaches, is a new section that we kinda added to it. It's kind of our service work within our sports. We've been pushing our four talents within our groups. Our four talents are leadership, commitment, spirit, and community. And we encourage our coaches to have the flexibility to set their own goals and around their own teams in those four talents. And there's a whole section on here where you can take a look at what they're doing with their teams throughout those four talents. So when you take a look at, you know, teams are gonna be blessed with impact players, and they'll go after it through competition, they'll take on their recognitions. But a lot of times, when you take a look at the impact of the team, there's a lot more than just the, the impact players that have the talent on there. And when you look at our talent work that we're doing, and that, that's where it really kinda strikes the chord, because we're activating a lot more kids in a lot more ways than just the sport. But we're using the sport as the vehicle to kinda drive them through the shaping and the moments that they're achieving now, and they'll learn twenty years from now how much of an impact that may have. So that's a pretty cool piece of our report. And again, like I said, it ends with our success page as far as our Badger Conference. If we reflect on that a little bit, you'll see us towards the top, middle of the pack, or towards the top in a lot of our sports. So we're well represented. It's a tribute to the work that our coaches are doing and the attention of our student athletes at their point in their seasons. A note to that, what I would say is it's, it's at a blistering pace. A lot of our seasons either have from twelve to sixteen weeks, from when our coaches get them to where they end, it's an incredible task that they have. And a lot of times, our coaches are beat up by the end of the season and don't really take a stopping point to look back at what they really accomplished. And what I mean by that, right now we're in our fall season, we're about halfway point, that's where I'm trying to get our coaches to understand is, you know, take a moment and just look at what you accomplished, taking a kid from entering your sport, working on the team chemistry, getting your goals kinda set in place, calling the expectations there, and then also doing well with the sport season and stuff. And getting the kids to take the bait all the way through that. And again, we're off on a fast track again this fall. I got a lot of success going and stuff, so we're kinda right there again. The next report, we jumped the hall over to our activities and fine arts and clubs. This year-end report was a request a few years back from the board to try to put something together so we can reflect that. What I would tell you is it's still a work in progress, and again, as we try to collect some of this stuff, it moves pretty fast. We put this on a Google Doc so our advisors and directors can kinda add that as they get them. And I, I, I think what happens is with a lot of social media and stuff, we push out our successes and everything like that, but we don't really track it in a, in a document and stuff. So as we pull this report together, it continues to collect, I think, some things that we need to reflect back and time on. So it's a good piece that's there, but it's also one where we're still trying to strengthen pieces that are doable to fit all of our clubs and stuff. So as you look through that report, what I can do from my end is, I can pull off Infinity Campus our participation numbers, male, female, and ours, or academic success through those. And then our advisors and directors will add in all their accomplishments as they go off to different activities that they participate in with their clubs or, or fine arts and stuff. So again, a good piece, but we're still kinda, we're working some angles to try to make that a, a little bit more stronger reflective of what we are accomplishing with that. The athletic one, it's kinda easy because it's driven through schedules, it's driven through a conference and state recognition and stuff. Jumping off of that, as we do this every year, and I've had the, the privilege and pleasure to work it for a couple of years, there's a piece that I wanna page you guys on, and that's our, our history piece for the school. And so this, this, we have a touchscreen in the school now, and what this allows us to do is kinda, it's a bridge to our alumni. And for a number of years, I was hearing from some of our alumni that the school that we currently have right now is not their school. And so that always sat with me as far as how do we build a bridge to that alumni to get them to recognize that we still have achievements of theirs in our school. It's just a different building and stuff. So here's a piece that we have now, and what we've tried to do, if you look at the bottom here, we've taken two, two, they're called clouds, and we have a cloud for athletics, but we also have fine arts and activities. So we're actually catching all the accolades that we have in here, and we're kinda going forward with it. So I'm gonna roll you through real quick a couple of picture, these pictures that are sliding up here are just, it's kind of a piece just to show you what we can do, and we've labeled it old school, I just took a couple pictures out of some old yearbooks. We have some iconic people that have, you know, blazed the trail for us through the years. These guys here, I don't know any of them, but I guarantee if they saw their pictures on there, it'd kinda activate a memory for them and stuff. John Clement, back in the day, I think that was a freshman basketball team that he was leading, and we all know what John did with his time with us, took it a lot more than just a freshman-level team. But this, on the side over here is a calendar look, so for instance, you can see what we have rolling tomorrow at the school, home and away. It's kind of an updated schedule that's accurate. A lot of times, we get stuff in social media that they don't make changes to things. This will update as I make changes on our schedules daily, but you can pull ahead on it. And it's a touchscreen right in the front of the school, I think some people don't know it's a touchscreen yet. But I just wanna take you into a couple of things with it, so fine arts and activities, we can go in, you know, here's an iconic picture in the background here. You know, here we got Mike Sassy, he's done a lot with our football program, but then he got next up with Brandon Beckwith. But what a lot of people remember right here is the press box. Taking a look back in time, I think it was in the early seventies, that thing was, we painted it, so it looks like it's newer, but it was, I think, early seventies when we put that communication center in. Right, David?
I think so.
But hey, it's.
I wasn't here then.
I was.
Yeah. Here's the thing with it, I think they said, hey, don't change anything because we've been successful, right? So it's, because we've been successful, we haven't changed anything. Here's a good picture, here's Andy North and Coach LeVac. You know, so again, it kinda pulls our history forward. When you take a look at this, we can take a look at our individuals, and when you take a look at our individuals, this is categorized by the last name of each person. So I pop down into the fine arts rooms and just pull this off their walls, and you can see where we're, we can go in and we can recognize these people back to when they received these awards. In time now, this will become the student graduation picture right here, so we can take a look at them. To go back, you just hit the icon. We go back down in here, so for instance, clubs and teams, if we go into activity, I just popped up last year's musical, and this is what we can do with that. So here's our directors, and here's our cast, all the way through that. So the kids can kinda see their names and what they participated in. If we go back through, we can go, if we go to the athletic side of things, we can go into teams, and if we look at awards, we can recognize where we're at with different things. So if we go into conference championships, it's a way you can take a look at different teams through the years, and we can start to blend these in. What I try to do is get our trophy cases all loaded up, and I'm still working on that, so I can pull all these pictures. So that, where you see that those dates are, those are all conference championships now that we've taken in, and eventually we'll fill in all these pictures with that. If we go back to athletics and we go to athlete, we can search it by year, and this is a year that every, there's names behind all of these years now. So when we have a class come in and they go to the screen, they can take a look at their era, and they can start to remember some of the names of the people that were there before them, or back in the day when their classmates were achieving some of this stuff. If we wanted to search athlete by last name, we can do this, and so I try to, I try to get a name behind each letter, as so when we open the school year, they would all have something there. But if we wanted to take a look at, here's what we could do with this, when we pop in the names of the.
Are you kidding? Do you see who's up there? Who has the most penalty minutes in the homework? No, I'm kidding.
So.
Thank you, that's cute.
Well, yeah, and I, I took the opportunity to take Susan's kids, but if you take a look in there, here's what you can do with that.
Actually, there are two up there.
Three, all three of them are there.
Are they? Oh my god.
So anyway, that's what we can do with that, and again, what it does for not only the parents, but the kids themselves and then their kids. Because we have some kids in the building, when you overhear the conversations, they'll see someone's uncle or their dad or something like that that's on there, and it's a piece that can still, it can kinda just grow itself. So our goal is this, we fall no further behind in collecting our data, and we work our way back to kinda filling all the gaps and stuff. So with that, our plan is to kinda fill in the gaps that we do have in some of our record-keeping, but also bring it up to speed to kinda connect the traditions that we achieved over the years and stuff. So it's a pretty cool piece, it's, there's a little elbow grease in it, but eventually what we'll do is we'll share that elbow grease with some of our kids, so they can kinda have some ownership and kinda build in some of the traditions that we've established, so.
So we could bring up Dave Kinsler when he was here in high school?
Yep.
And Brandon Beckwith, so he was in that class, I guess, ninety-six.
So that's good. So that's kinda where we are with our, our year-end and kinda bringing it up to speed. Any questions on that?
Is there, are we ever gonna be able to access the way you do this, like on a webpage?
Yep, you can take this link right now, and this link right here, and I can share with you, you can pull it up on your phone or at home or anything, it's a live link.
Are you kidding? That's amazing.
So, and that'll go on our traditionals newsletter to our, our alumni, so they're aware of that. And again, you know, I've had people contact me that have better records than I have, and it's, that's what we work off of, and we're kinda, kinda continue to strengthen what we don't know. So, it's a fun piece, it's kind of a rewarding piece, so. Any other questions on that?
It's worth every time.
Cause my second part is kinda the, the real fruit of what I, I get to do every day, and that's working with some of our kids. So I brought a couple of our, our finest with me, and this is, these guys represent our sportsmanship team, so I'll, I'll bring them up and they have some talking points for you.
The first thing we have is our team got together and made you guys all thank you cards, just to recognize what you guys do for everyone.
You guys, wait, 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 you guys have to introduce yourselves?
I'm Jackson Hobson.
I'm Trenton Herbert.
I'm Marshall Lehman.
Alright, we got Dean Bowles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
I have pictures. Oh, Jeff, I'll give those to you and we'll spin them on.
Okay. Okay, so these guys, they represent our sportsmanship team, and it kinda started last year with, we took a team of, of four kids up to the WI sportsmanship. They had a chance to sit in some different meetings throughout the day, and they got some ideas that other schools are doing stuff. And so we've done this before too, and when you bring the team back to the school, you either go someplace or just kinda sets there. And these guys have gotten behind a lot of cool things this last year, and we continue as we meet with them, continue to kinda build forward with it. And so, there's a lot of times where you wanna kinda put it in front of them and inch them towards what to do. This is a great team of thinkers, and they have a lot of good things that they have. So for me, I get to sit and enjoy that and kinda build it forward and just kinda put them out there and stuff. So a little bit of the activity was to come here tonight too and just kinda talk about some of the activities that we started doing last year, and kinda their place on it and kinda pushing it forward. So why don't you share with these guys what you're doing? And I'll just kinda go through some of the stopping points of where we've been this last year.
So we are the sportsmanship team, and our goal is to recognize greatness and all of that is involved within the district, not just sports, but also fine arts, to recognize them as well.
And one of the first things we did when Mr. Schreiner pulled us four together, it was me, Marshall, and then two other females from our school, and then we built off of that after the first thing we did. The first thing we did was go to the summit in Stevens Point, which was really cool, because we had the chance to sit in front of a bunch of different speakers from different schools, and learn about how they conduct their student sections, or they give accolades to people and announcements and stuff like that. It was really cool.
And then the next thing we did, we had eight members last year when we grew to eight members, and we went Nelson's where our bus drivers work, and we thanked them and made them a cake, and went there, showed them how much we actually appreciated, because what they do doesn't really go unnoticed.
So we get a card and they get a cake?
One thing we also did was we thanked the custodians for what they do, because I know from just seeing them around, they don't get many thanks for what they do, and we know how hard they work and cleaning up everything, and we're just very appreciative of what they do for us.
And another thing we did that I thought was really effective is we got together some of last year's captains for all the sports teams and a few fine arts teams, and we went to Glacial Drumming as well as Winter Club.
Kai Shroob.
And.
Kai Shroob.
Kai Shroob School. And we had different tables, and the kids that were interested in different things got to rotate around, and we talked about what they all entail and how much work it is and what you have to do to be a part of that team. And they had to, like, ask questions and stuff.
We really enjoyed this club, like, it was not as a big of thing when we came into it, it was mainly just the summit, but after the summit, the four of us decided to grow off and make it a bigger thing than it actually was. And we enjoy meeting twice a month and brainstorming ideas for the upcoming school year, and just kind of putting off what MG is and how great of a school district it is.
So, it, weren't, didn't I see one of you?
Yeah, that was, that was me at One Aquas.
So I'm coming out of One Aquas School on Thursday after this incredible incident that involved so many of our children. And here's this young man coming out the door who says, not only holds the door for me, but says hello, so that, was that part of the spirit thing that's really cool? Um, but we talked on the way out, and he said, I come down to One Aquas School, and within like three minutes, and he's trying to get up to school, and I'm trying to find out more. But again, they're in the schools. I mean, this is amazing.
Did you make it thirty?
No.
No.
Probably would've scored a card during the home, if I didn't.
Can I ask you a question too? So one thing that's interesting to me is how you differentiate your involvement from other types of leadership opportunities already existing at MG? I mean, I'm just sort of perfectly aware of some of the other things, like key bug or student council, or, so how, what's your niche?
Um, it's kind of involving, well, they only, mainly focus on like different stuff, but we mainly focus on sports and clubs around and leadership and kind of making kind of a family, like, of MG with, not just saying that high schoolers go to the high school, but they also can be involved in the different schools and just being one big thing.
And another thing I thought is, I'm a football captain, so I only get that part of the school, that's my experience, and the last year I got to experience the fine art side, and I thought that was pretty cool.
And a nice thing that our team has too is they got representatives, two male and two female from each grade level. And what we're working on now is breaking down different activities that each grade level can do, so it's not dominated by the upperclassmen. And then the upperclassmen on our team have to support the freshmen or sophomore levels in their activity that they choose to do. So they're, they're in leadership as they grow through it, and then what we'll do is, there'll be traditional things that we'll continue to do with it, and we'll just kinda continue those on, but also add in what they feel comfortable in doing. So it's kinda growing it forward from these guys and stuff, and again, a good group to start off with and kinda build some things in there, and kinda take hold of our sportsmanship, and try to recognize some of those little things behind the scenes that are really setting us up every day to be successful in what we do, so, it's gonna be.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is just an excellent evening.
You made a night.
Which one of you do the little heart under the exclamation point?
I think I'll probably be one.
I think only you've got that. Actually, we have to put a heart on my head.
Alright, thank you so much. Thank you.
Guys. And thank you Jeff for helping.
Yes.
Yes. I think, I take an opportunity to take what you do, the other programs in other schools. I think about WSB and how they do the presentations of things that go on at schools, and we'll, we'll help you watch for that.
Good. Don't share all of our secrets with me.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Yes. Next on our administrative reports is our Director of Business Services.
Alright, so I will actually ask Jeff Carr, our facilities supervisor, to come up and walk through majority of the report tonight on the capital projects. But one thing that I do wanna say is that due to the operational referendum that we had passed, the district had this year been able to increase our capital projects to be at six hundred thousand dollars. In the past, we were at that middle two hundred thousand dollars, so as a district that has, you know, a number of buildings, and some of those buildings are fairly aged, that's not a, a lot of money. And even at the six hundred thousand dollar mark, we're still at an area that we still need to continue to focus on and balance and prioritize. So what Jeff is gonna walk through is the projects that the board actually approved for the summer, talk about the completions, how those projects goes, how, how they went. In addition to that, we will, I will share out in the future, once we get all the invoices back, to let you know where we came at with our budget, but, Jeff?
Alright, thank you. They got it?
Yep, we have that.
You got it in front of them?
Okay.
Everyone started saying, wow, you have, and then you're going, what?
We're looking at that and only that.
Okay. You can see the breakdown of the things that were approved, so that we had a budget to work within, and just, you know, a little bit of history on that. We went back and all these things, as we tried to put them together, we tried to prioritize them, but then we tried to make sure that they stayed within the budget. That was probably the most challenging thing, because as we started working on these, I know personally, there was a lot of things that I felt I wish we could've done a heck of a lot more with, due to the fact we had the resources in those buildings, but we couldn't really maximize them because the dollars were restricted. But that's, you know, life, and that's what we worked with. So as we went through these, we worked with, you know, each building staff, anything that had to do with classrooms, or anything that was on the instructional side, involved the principals, and then the people that were directly affected, whether it was their classroom or their area of expertise, art, science, whatever it was. So that's kinda then where there was input into that, and then as we finally got to the point of bidding everything, getting it set up, locking in the contractors, we worked with Dan from CG Schmidt, and we put together then our project schedule. Project schedule then, we had to work around summer school, so a lot of these things, which was advantageous that we did it far enough in advance, we were able to tell contractors either the days that you're gonna be able to get in, and this is when you gotta be out by. So they were able to then work us into their schedule accordingly, which in the long run kept us on schedule and things were completed before school started. So we'll continue with that going forward, you know, we're gonna try and get a little bit ahead of it even more this year, hoping that, you know, we can get to six hundred thousand and maybe a little bit more. With each individual project at each school, we had two major things, pavement improvements and roofs. Those are probably your biggest ones as far as financial impacts to a budget. The pavement improvement and the roof work, we've got a five-year plan for that. Fortunately, the roofs, I can tell you that we're. Uh, fortunately in the roofs, I can tell you that we're actually probably a lot better off than most school districts. I'm gonna say we're in real good shape, but we're not behind the eight ball yet. We're actually kind of on schedule with where the roofs are as far as their life expectancy. But if we hit any deferred, deferred type of projects, we're gonna get behind. And all that's gonna do is create number one, problems that we got a Band-Aid. And number two, back us up as far as not being on a good solid schedule going forward. The pavement is another one, you know, for something that's just, that you just drive on and you don't think too much of it. There's another thing, if we don't stay on top of it, you know, we're gonna end up costing us a heck of a lot more money by going in there and, you know, doing grinds and overlays, uh, more drainage work. Uh, we've got some areas that have been identified, you know, where we're gonna have to go in and redo some base work on some of these things. But we got off to a, you know, decent start this year with what we had to work with. Then you get into the things that, you know, involves, you know, the educational aspect. The classrooms, uh, at the high school, you know, the big one there was the science lab, science lab renovation. That went over very well. That actually, that is one of them that I can tell you I know came in under budget. So it worked out well. We had good collaboration with Paul and his staff to help put together the pieces of what they needed from the curriculum standpoint and what those kids needed on a day-to-day basis. Uh, that went on time. We were able to get in there, um, prior to summer school getting out because of where that was located. So we were able to do the demo of that room and that thing was sitting there ready to roll when summer school got out, when we could really go at it. Plus then we had, you know, the timing of getting the cabinets built and, you know, those type of things that there's a little bit of delay. The lockers was another one that's got, you know, anywhere from a six to eight week lead time on. But we got all that taken care of, that delivery installation, all worked out fine. Gym floor up there was just, you know, an annual thing that's gotta be done to maintain that surface so that we don't run into a major problem somewhere down the road with that. And plus it's, you know, like these, uh, young gentlemen we're talking about, you've got a pride with something like that. That's where you're bringing, you know, your fans and your alumni and visitors into a gym and no different than a football field or your swimming pool. You know, those type of facilities represent what the district's all about. So we wanna try and make sure that those are in good shape going forward. Uh, One Aquas School, the roof replacement was the biggest thing down there and that was very timely. We had been spending over the past couple of years, you know, a few dollars here and a few dollars there to try and chase leaks. But now we've done a good portion of that roof and we're in pretty good shape down there. We did a couple, we were able to squeeze in a couple exterior door upgrades because, you know, the windows and doors are pretty ancient and, uh, you know, not energy efficient. And we run into problems as far as when there's problems with them. Especially now, you know, with the focus on securing a building, some of those parts you can't get anymore. So we, this will give us a little bit of heads up to make sure that, you know, we're, we're doing things that need to be done and, you know, providing a secure, uh, atmosphere down there. Kai Shrope, we did some, uh, pavement work there, uh, that was well needed on the far side of the building, even though it's, you know, seems to be very simple. But the dumpsters that were right by the boundary next to the Catholic church were starting to slip away and they were like about ready to slide into the church. So we got that all taken care of and redid the road that went back up then to the playground from back there. Um, the other big project at Kai Shrope was the art room replacement. Once again, that was cabinets and, uh, renovation of that area. Uh, and that came out very, very well. Once again, that was done with the involvement of the staff at the school, reading his people with input. And that was done in a timely manner too.
Jeff, the board got a very nice thank you note for the art room upgrade.
Oh, good.
Not like we can take any credit at all for it except for, you know, supporting it. But that's one that jumps out to me on the list that, um, I, I know is visible to people and appreciated.
Yeah.
Um, in much more, uh, uh, obvious way than the pavement improvements, you know?
Right.
And so it's, I was looking at this list and thinking, the lovely thank you note we got for the twelve thousand dollar project and the two hundred thousand dollar roof replacement, no one's gonna mention.
Nobody's gonna mention that.
It reminds me of last year when we had the, um, the water bottle filler station.
Right.
Relatively inexpensive, but really awesome for the people who notice it every day.
Yeah.
It's just kind of a, I just wanted to comment on how much I appreciate that thank you note, but also pass it along to you because it, sometimes the things that are noticeable to people are small, but really make a difference for them every day.
Well, and that's where, you know, like I started with, I wish there was more that we could do for the educational environment because, um, I've gotta give the staff here a lot of credit with what they've got to work with. And my staff who have to try and maintain things that sometimes it's a challenge of how do you piecemeal this back together? Because, well, you know, just a simple thing right now that we're kind of on the verge of is clocks, bells, intercom systems. I mean, you know, we're getting ready for daylight savings time coming up here. And that's always like, everybody takes a big, deep breath is, are the clocks gonna change right? And come in Monday morning, are we where we need to be? Or is that clock still just slowly ticking its way around trying to catch up? Um, so we're doing some things there and those are the things that, you know, you wish you could do. Because that's an integral part of the day for staff, students, you know, hear that bell? And to be able to look at the clock and go, I only gotta sit in this classroom ten more minutes. But if it's, you know, not working, you know, what are we doing? So our people have done a very good job of, of trying to work to put these things together and keep them there. But going forward, you know, we're hoping that we're gonna be able to really make a big impact, uh, by doing some more things.
Just gonna jump in and correct you real quick. Our students say, boy, there's only ten minutes left. I wish we could stay longer.
Wish I could stay longer.
Yeah.
But it also, Jeff, it is a reminder that even some of the smaller ones are truly appreciated.
Yeah, I know.
I, that's why I wanted to call that one out.
And, and I mean, a simple thing like bathroom partitions, I mean, that's really minimal. But, you know, it's, it's an upgrade. It's, you know, a little bit more modern as far as, uh, the material. So that, you know, kids carve on it or do whatever, just we can make it go away. Plus it doesn't rust. You know, just the things that, you know, will maybe make that a little bit sharper for that. Um, we just completed all the punch list work, like I said, just prior to the start of school. Uh, everything came out in very good shape. The contractors were very easy to work with. Uh, we got very good competitive pricing and like I said, I'm hoping that we can improve on that this year and get this stuff out on the streets in probably January so we can get ahead of it. Um, I mean, you're all well aware that the contractors are, you know, got a lot of work and not enough people to do it. Um, so that's something that we wanna make sure that we do what we can do to avoid any type of delays and impact the start of school. Um, closing out the budget, like Jared said, and when we get that information, that'll be brought back forward. But, uh, I feel pretty comfortable, there was no real, um, surprises on any of these things that, uh, would impact, you know, the budget that we had set up. We did do a couple of things in anticipation of future work, so we were trying to be very proactive. Uh, it, it's a simple thing, once again, a thing you won't see. But, you know, hopefully somewhere down the road, we're gonna be able to improve the HVAC system at One Aquas School. Well, you spend a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars on a roof to make sure that that maintains its warranty. You don't wanna disturb that. So in anticipation of the HVAC, HVAC improvements, we put in a curb up there so that they can mount rooftop units so that we, when we change that over, that will be done and they won't have to, um, pull up that roof in a certain area to mount that curb. And since the contractor was there, that saved us probably close to twelve thousand dollars. So, you know, that was a little cost overrun, but cost overrun, not enough because of some other things coming in. And we'll show you those numbers when we get there. So we tried to be proactive and looking at things that we could do now in anticipation of hopefully, you know, work in the future and not have to redo anything or rip anything up. So, and that was also a part of, you know, how we came up with some of these things of what was gonna be done along with the dollars. Any questions on anything?
Do you have a ballpark plan for when that HVAC might be replaced or I'm sure that's a huge expense thing?
It's gonna be a big cost.
Yeah.
So that's gonna probably be something you'll be discussing down the road here.
I know it's a problem.
Yeah, I've, those unit events that we have down there, those are things that we're definitely Band-Aiding and putting some rubber bands on them and things like that to make sure that they function day to day, so.
I, I think we can say it's a big enough cost, it doesn't fit in this capital project budget.
Okay, it's gotta be.
So it's something that the board is gonna have to address.
I figure it's not, okay. Gotcha.
Yes.
We were talking about the high school roof. What's the?
That's next year.
That's next year. And we're gonna do it all at once or?
Not, not all at once. I don't think we're gonna be able to budget-wise be able to do it. But we, what we did was as we did this, uh, roof survey, we went through and they did, you know, infrared studies.
Yeah.
Where we knew there was leaking because infrared will tell where you got wet spots.
Hmm.
And then the age of, of when things were put on. So we've got numbers for a total replacement or we've got, and this is throughout the district, uh, where a total replacement may be needed because your savings is definitely gonna be on your labor since they're already there.
Mm-hmm.
And your materials can be purchased in bulk. But these areas then were prioritized so that if we've gotta do some budget cuts, we can say, okay, we've really gotta do this and not go any further because we don't have any more money to work with it, so.
Gotcha.
But that's next year, the high school.
Thank you.
Uh, we're becoming more and more proactive when we talk about our facilities. Um, the district has always done a, a fairly great job, especially when we looked at our, uh, past projects when our roof was needed, the district would go for referendum, get the roof replaced. Um, but when the district entered in and did the facility study, a lot of these items were on that facility. So then went through with EUA and CG Schmidt. Um, obviously there, they've listed it all for a number of years. In addition to that, being able to meet some of the needs of our, our buildings that might not necessarily be reflective of a facility study, you know, such as the, um, science lab classroom. That is a educational need that's needed to be able to add an additional lab so the high school can, um, have some more flexibility in their scheduling and being able to offer those things that might not have been identified in a lab or in a facility study. In addition to the facility study, we've taken it a couple steps farther. Um, we went through and we hired a civil engineer that went through and looked at all of our parking lots. Um, it's very easy for us to identify parking lots where there's cracks and things like that. But really bringing a civil engineer in and doing the boring to find out what's the content below, has any of that washed out? And to give us a clear idea when it comes time to budgeting, are we doing a, just a surface replacement? Or are we gonna be replacing the soil underneath it to make it? In addition to that, we've done the roof survey. Now, we went through and we've, um, contracted with a roofing company that came through, looked at all of our current warranties, did what Jeff had talked about, bring, um, heat sensor and making sure that we have an idea and giving us the ability to say, you know, obviously with school finance and having, you know, sometimes I don't wanna use the word budget cuts, but making some tough decisions. And so if we can't replace all the roof, we wanna make sure that we're replacing the situ, the areas that are the worst. And then you can come back and get the other half the next year or being able to look at that. Or as the district continues to look at different maintenance programs down the road, you know, is it, is it one of those things where when we talk about One Aquas HVAC, that's a standalone project that could technically require, um, the board to make some decisions and incorporate that into a, you know, in our operational referendum, we, if we have to renew it or something like that. So we wanna make sure that we have all that in place instead of sitting back and saying, oh, we need to talk about that. Now we gotta hurry up and go and get that. Being able to be proactive and having those, all those things scheduled about. So as we work through the budgets, work through facility studies, work through committees, we can have that information.
Thank you. Dean?
Um, a question to whoever, Jared. The, uh, uh, is the five hundred thousand dollars a year that we, that we projected annually after the referendum for, um, the maintenance thing, uh, we kept faith with that, that, that amount of money pretty well? And, uh, has that been too much, too little? Uh, if we had to do another five hundred, another five-year one, would that be, uh, six hundred or four hundred or where?
So the first year after the referendum was passed, if the referendum was passed in April, uh, we weren't able to have our contractors in line for that upcoming budget year. So we put that money into, um, technology and, and upgrading our infrastructure on the technology. So this is the first year that we were able to take the money that we talked about in the referendum and apply to capital budgets as we said. Um, so that will continue to happen moving forward now that we're on that cycle. Um, speaking of it, is it too little? Yes, it's too little. Is it too much? By no means is it too much. Um, obviously it, it, it is requiring us to make decisions and ideally we would like to see some additional funds put in there. But being able to balance those needs out with the future planning of the district, um, for this past year it worked. We might have to ask for a little bit more next year depending on what number of roofs are up or pavement, um, what parking lots need to be replaced along with the educational needs of the districts.
Well, it has the, yeah, yeah, what I hear you saying is, is that the five hundred thousand dollars annual, uh, maintenance, uh, at least over the long, you know, is shy of what, uh, what the need would be for maintenance.
Correct.
Is it a hundred thousand shy or a couple hundred thousand?
Well, if you recall from the facility study, the first year what they classified as urgent needs was well over a million dollars. Um, and in the size of our district that having about a, you know, a thirty-eight, thirty-nine million dollar budget, we should be closer to the million dollars on just maintenance side of things on an annual basis. Especially when we're trying to keep our roofs up to date and being able to do those on schedule. So we're shy, I'd say if we could get that closer to that million dollars would be much better. But obviously understanding there are other needs that, you know, money needs to be allocated to.
Jeff?
I think I know the answer to this, but is there any federal money to add, um, solar into our roofs at all?
There's, that stuff is drying up.
Uh-huh.
I mean, we've looked at that. Um, basically what it ends up being is you can get the possibility of the panels themselves. But what it's gonna cost you for the installation and, you know, everything that goes with that is pretty expensive. Plus then, you know, the other thing that becomes a factor in that is a changeover of that solar to adapt to your current HVAC system. So that's where, you know, like I said, when you look at getting a grant just for the panels, the ancillary things that go with them almost outweigh what the cost of those panels are. So the district has to make a pretty big commitment, you know, to say that we're gonna do this, you know, in year twenty eighteen, fiscal year twenty eighteen. To make that commitment on those grants, okay, you'll get two hundred fifty thousand dollars for, um, the panels that will be awarded. But then you may have to commit three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars for the installation and the upgrades that are gonna have to go to adapt to silver. That's, it seems to be the direction where a lot of that energy stuff is going now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I'm sure somewhere down the road when you start looking at green buildings, you're gonna see some of those things. The other thing that a lot of those things turn into is you look at that initial upfront cost. What is the maintenance cost of that going forward of those types of pieces of equipment versus, you know, just what you're using now boilers?
So it makes more sense if you're building a new building as opposed to toke toke.
Try to put it in a, 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 yeah.
It didn't, uh, just in general inquiry didn't, when we, when we entertained cooperating with the city of Monona, put solar panels on our roof, uh, I think, I think we estimated that it, if you needed to replace a roof, that, that, uh, that added considerable cost even if the solar panels were themselves not a factor, just the physical replacement of it.
So, and, and just to add, those solar panels weren't going to advantage us at all. That was just for the city, so it would've been on our property for the city, which is why we didn't do it because of cost to us. But, but yeah, some future.
Would still be a factor, but it would benefit us.
Sure. Right.
Thank you. I wanna, um, quickly mention that I had a wonderful conversation with some of our science high school teachers and they were thrilled about the new space. So, thank you.
Great.
It was great.
That's what it's all about. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Superintendent, your report.
Just, just one thing real briefly, I didn't wanna, since we had two lengthy ports already. Um, just an, uh, reminder, next week, uh, is our first in-service day, um, for the school year, next Tuesday. Um, and professional development that's involved for all district teachers, they're part of curriculum review, uh, teams. And you've heard Lisa report out on that and pass off their curriculum site. Um, and professional development that's involved for all district teachers, they're part of curriculum review, uh, teams, and you've heard Lisa report out on that and pass off their curriculum site. So, everyone is assigned to a team, so, um, last year, where we began implementing that, really excited about that opportunity again. Then we're also providing professional development for our support staff, so our professionals have, uh, training as well as our, uh, clerical and administrative assistants. So, really, uh, big day coming up next Tuesday, looking forward to it.
The board gives, uh, announcement about that. Do we ever tell the parents that that's what's going on, on the in-service days? Maybe, maybe they don't care, but, so, but still, uh, that just made me wonder, when you said that.
Um. Yeah, I'm sure communication over the years has, there's been some, as far as what exactly has been communicated, I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, 'cause I, I really enjoyed the thing that Lisa sent us about what's going on on Tuesday, and, and I thought it was interesting, and then I just thought, oh, but I only saw it 'cause I was getting my board email, not as a parent.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, maybe not that many parents are interested, but still, it's kinda, uh, maybe something put in the back of our mind that, um, for those few parents who are interested, it kind of also justifies the, the time off of school in the sense of why kids aren't in school, uh, you know, when you know it's something really awesome going on, as I believe this to be what's gonna be happening.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, that takes us to board reports and Dean Bowles' personnel committee.
I don't have a report.
All right.
I'm sorry. I'm just gonna make one up.
Still, uh, find a pass.
I'll make a longer one next time.
That's what I.
Can do, um, why don't we just acknowledge that the personnel committee met on the thirty-first of August, and we'll catch up next time. All right, thank you. The next board report, yes?
Jennifer, do you want to, Dan, do you just, I mean, we did talk about, uh, basically two things, and, and a couple of things I could think of. We talked about the compensation plan, and.
Yeah, we talked about actually salary, um, structure. Yeah.
But, but we talked a lot about, um, the educational component of level four. Um, the package, how the information gets out, how to support staff. It was just a big discussion item, but there was close to an hour spent on that.
That was actually the previous meeting.
Previous meeting, yeah, yeah. So, it was mostly.
So, yeah, the two items were revised, possible, or, you know, revisions for the teacher compensation plan, and then the s- structure of level three compensation.
Oh, the level three, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, that takes us to board reports, and I will say the entire title, Community Engagement, Communication and Government Relations Committee, thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, so this committee met on Tuesday, September fifth. Great turnout from our large committee, 'cause there were ten citizen members appointed and, um, that, as additions as Susan and myself. Um, there were three topics on our agenda for this meeting. Uh, the first is to let our group know that there's also a facilities advisory committee being formed, and it was important to bring that up so we can be mindful of how the role of our community relations committee may at some point overlap with the facilities planning, because that will involve some communication to stakeholders in the district, so, um, we're just mindful of that going in, um, that people will be interested in, in the subjects being discussed, and both of them overlap. And then we spent the bulk of our time looking at ideas that had come in at the time that people applied to serve on the committee. Um, it's such a, a huge volume of interest and really good ideas that came in, so we compiled those and engaged our committee in looking at those and expressing interest in what they thought the priority should be, and had some really nice consensus around a couple of the items that rose to the top. So now the next steps, as far as that goes, Susan and I will be talking, we're talking with Dan about how we look at the things that rose to the top in terms of where the energy is, and people who wanted to be involved in this work, how we can now leverage that and get some action taken on the things that seem to have the most, uh, clear, obvious, uh, connection. And so, um, we'll be continuing with that at the next meeting, and I anticipate shortly being able to come back to this board, 'cause our, um, CCEGR committee is still meeting a couple times a month. I should be able to bring something back here for you to review and to confirm that our interpretation of the board's charge to the committee is in line with what you want us to be doing. Um, but we're still in the, uh, first meeting stage with the bigger group of figuring out, um, uh, which topics we've identified as the first things to do. Um, so that will continue, and then, uh, the last thing that we talked about, uh, we had Susan Fox, who's our legislative liaison, gave an update of the things happening at the Capitol, of which there are many and, uh, sundry challenges there. Um, and sort of thinking of through how the charge to our committee relates to Susan's particular role as a legislative liaison, because there may not be any clear task for the committee members to do, but we still find it's within the purview of our committee, so we're trying to keep it on the, on the agenda and on the radar. Um, but Susan's been carrying the huge water bucket with her up till now. Um, I think that's all I plan to say, but I'm happy to take questions if you had, or additions if Susan or Dan wanted to add anything else. And no one's quit the committee yet. That's just the goal.
It's the, it's the stickers, I'm, I'm joking. That was a good process, yeah.
Thank you.
Susan?
Um, and I appreciate being able to sit with us, and I think it's really incredibly helpful. Some of, some of the feedback that, that I received that I would just add is that they are looking forward to, uh, establishing, um, kind of a go-all, um, for the year that, that as a group they can focus on collaboratively and finish, rather than just barely get started, 'cause there were so many ideas.
And there's so much interest in producing things, and one of the things that Dan and I just briefly touched on is, uh, having some early wins for the committee
Yeah.
that they've accomplished a few things together, and, and feeling like we've not just brought them together for us to talk to them, or necessarily for them to serve as an informal focus group, because that is an important function of that group itself, but also to make sure that we have some tangible work product, which is why I wanna come back here and say, here's the things that we're thinking of doing. Um, we do have an opportunity coming up, and in the appointment, on that note, for the committee to actually do something. When the people were appointed to this committee, in their appointment letters from Jennifer, we included the request that they ho- planned to attend our annual meeting, which is on October fourth. So hopefully they mark their calendars and you'll meet some of the people who are, uh, working on this, or they may approach you, but, um, that's a first step towards having a communication auditor, what are the opportunities that we have, and just familiarizing ourselves with things they can do early on, give us feedback on things, good suggestions, but then also do something, be visible themselves. So hopefully you'll see some of them October fourth.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, all right. That takes us into our Possible Action Item section, and the first item is, um, the approval of resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed six million dollars, insurance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes, and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program.
I'd like to move approval of the resolution as presented.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion, further discussion, Dean?
Could, uh, you elaborate on what the, the funds are you, will be used for?
Yep. Um, so this is an annual, um, cash flowing, cash flow borrowing event. Um, due to, uh, structure of how the district receives its funds, the district is, uh, funded about seventy-seven percent from local, which is through property taxes. And, um, property taxes payments do not come into the district until, starting until December and January, and then, uh, but our fiscal year actually started July first. Um, so this is really, um, to allow the district to continue to meet the payroll obligations, to be able to fund the purchases needed to have school going. Uh, and, and this year, we, um, as the district continues to see its, um, budget increase and stuff like that, last year it was at five million, this year we are at six million. That's just due to the fact that when payrolls fall and, um, my expenditures are due. So, this does not give the district any additional funds, um, above and beyond what we will be going through during the budget hearing. Um, this just allows us to have cash upfront on hand to be able to meter, um, payments throughout the school year.
So it's to fill in gaps between state aids and, and local tax collection and that sort of thing.
Yep. Correct.
Thank you, other questions? All right, uh, all those in favor, oh, oh, sorry, it's, it is a roll call, thank you, I got, thank you.
Roll call. Okay.
Thank you guys, everybody, um, okay, that's a little embarrassing, um, so we need to call a vote, please, starting with Dean Bowles.
Aye.
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 All right, the motion carries, thank you. It's a good thing it's a committee. All right, next up on our Possible Action Items is the consideration of offer to purchase of public property.
We have in our board docs the details of the property, and we've already had a chance to discuss it, so I'd like to move approval of the offer to purchase public property as presented.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion?
I'd like us to roll call.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All right, we will take a roll call vote as requested, starting with Dean Bowles.
Aye.
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 All right, the motion carries. Thank you, that takes us to our third item under Possible Action Items, which is a discussion and reconsideration, or just further discussion, I should say, of the charge of the ad hoc facilities advisory committee, which was taken up at our previous meeting, and was requested to be on tonight's agenda as well.
Okay. Yeah, I can just share the, um, of course, the document that was approved at the last board meeting, um, is attached, but in addition, a tentative agenda schedule for the facilities advisory committee. Jared and I have had an opportunity to meet, uh, twice now with the folks from EUA to talk about, uh, the plan, and so I think that might help, you know, provide some more information of what the, what we have as an idea of how this committee, uh, will work and, and, you know, the timeframe and, and so on. And so you see on that document, um, we determined that we really are gonna need six meetings to get through all of the items, with the idea then, um, with, you know, regular board reports along the way, and an opportunity for board feedback, you know, to be shared back with the committee, you know, as they do their work, and then culminating at the end of January, where there's an initial report to the board of findings with regard to options and possible recommendations. And then, based upon that, the board will work with us on determining what exactly we wanna survey the community with, and, and approving, the board would actually approve that survey before it goes out. Then, once we have the survey results, share it back to the committee one more time, they have an opportunity to review them and see if that might influence or make any adjustments on their recommendations or options, and of course, then to the board for, you know, deliberation, and probably over several meetings to ultimately looking in, you know, July with making some, the decisions. So, that's the, the timeframe, and you see the specific things that we've, um, as far as the order of the events, um, to work on, and so with that, um, you know, I know last time you only had an opportunity for, the first time, to look at that proposed charge and make some adjustments, and now two weeks later with a little bit of additional information, a chance to think about that, you have an opportunity again to review that scope and charge and see if that's still consistent with, you know, the work that we're proposing, and, uh, if there's any questions or, you know, um, adjustments that need to be made.
Thank you.
Susan, I'm gonna ask a, do you have any thought about, um, I know you've received all the board recommendations at this point.
Yeah.
I just wondered, do you have a thought about when the committee might be formed in that timeframe?
Sure, yep, so we're in the process, we began, uh, contacting some individuals. Uh, so I've met with Jennifer, reviewed, you know, the candidates, and we've, you know, as, not only what's in the charge, but the right thing to do is to try to make sure we have, you know, fair representation with regard to, uh, the communities in which they live, um, parents versus non-parents, um, um, even male versus female, and as many different, you know, groups as we can look at, um, uh, to try to have as diverse a group as possible, and, you know, diverse viewpoints and backgrounds. And so with that, uh, we've kinda done an initial rank ordering, and, and so they said we're in the con- process of contacting individuals. I think the folks that we initially contacted, we asked to get back to us by Monday, okay, and then, um, if any cannot, then we'll, you know, move on down the list. So, a reminder, we had actually thirty-two names that were submitted, and, you know, we need to have it at twenty. So, to answer your question specifically, Susan, uh, by the end of next week, we should have it.
Thirty-two that were submitted, by whom?
Um, a variety of people, board members, myself, and, um, well, basically the board's members and myself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, are we going to put in there some, what, regular reports to the board means? Didn't we discuss that last time?
On for you.
But that's, is it in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the second glass floor.
I, I would just add, I think you did a really nice job of summarizing. Again, it's in, it's nice when you ask the question to make sure that what you wanted is in there, and then you look and it isn't, I think that's really, uh, and I did double-check against my notes, and I didn't see anything that we had talked about as a group that wasn't included. So you've done a nice job, it's tough work.
Um, let's see, I'm sorry, I have, I have different documents here, I gotta get back to the, that document, there it is, um. This is analyzing those options and reach committee consensus. One of the, one of the recommendations of the, um, uh, long-range hostility panel and commission, committee report, final recommendations we pulled around, developing grade configurations. Um, and that was kind of open-ended, and I'm learning how, what that means and how this committee would approach that problem in terms of this, this scope that we have in front of us.
Yep, sure. Um, so we've talked about that with our meetings with EUA, exactly what that means, and so our intention would be to share the work that was done, not only with the previous committee, but specifically the board that did work after that committee with, um, and looking at those options. And so, that is what would be presented, um, is what, um, was seen as viable options at that time. So, this committee certainly will look at that, but not spend a great deal of time of rehashing, you know, that work. Um, they certainly might want to, in their recommendation, they certainly would have the freedom to comment on that, and, and, you know, with regard to those options, but we don't see that as a, a big part of, of starting from scratch with that.
Don't you think that kinda decides everything? I mean, that's like the damn, I think.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with Jeff, and so on the schedule that we were provided, it says October twenty-fourth is the day that they are gonna be discussing, and I already marked my calendar that if it's possible for me, that's a great fly-on-the-wall opportunity to hear those forty-five minutes of group discussion
Mm-hmm.
a- about that topic, and I'm very curious here what that group of people would start to say on the topic, and, uh, so,
Yeah.
as, as anyone could go and sit and listen, but it also wa- is within that meeting, will come back to us as a report back, so even if I can't go that night, although I will try, 'cause I'm super interested, we'll be hearing right after that, when Dan brings that back to this group
Right.
to tell us what they talked about.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I appreciate the question, and that's the first thing I looked at on this list, and one of the things to talk about that, and it's fairly early on in the process, for the reason you gave, that that's gonna drive all the rest of the discussion.
Thank you, Dean.
I, I would suggest that the grade configuration's gonna be one that rests with us at the end, uh, in any event, and the, the other committee, what little time is spent on it, basically said the same thing.
Sure.
That, that they felt that was a decision which had to be made by professional educators and the board, I think.
Yep.
Susan?
Um, well, I'm, I'm comfortable with the charge as it's laid out, and I really appreciate having the schedule, I think that's great. I mean, it's clearly very well thought out, and for the same reason Carrie you just mentioned, I can, some meetings will be more important than all the ideas and others, and that would be one of them I'd like to get to, but, so thank you for the work on this.
So, in order to focus on, uh, the task at hand, do you think that there's sufficient guidance for the board in terms of grade configuration, that the committee can move forward?
I do.
At this point.
Really?
That's good, cool.
Well.
I don't know what we've talked about, I remember that review, I don't know where.
We'll have to review our own notes. It's been a while since we've talked about it.
It's one that gives us bad information again, so, to refresh the board members that may not remember that, but again, here's meeting two, this is. But, again, here's meeting two, this is early, this is October twenty-fourth. That's gonna be reported back either in October, November, but we're then gonna have the opportunity to discuss what was discussed at that meeting after that report. So, we're gonna have early input on how that went and things we might want you to add that you give to the committee so that they have a better understanding. I mean, it's all set up here in a way that we can respond every time and the big issues are early. So, again, I appreciate the way the schedule is set up, we aren't gonna wait till January to start talking about that.
And there's a whole month between October twenty-fourth and November twenty-eighth, which is the next time we board meetings. So, we will find out if they have enough information or not, or if there's something different they need.
Okay. So, the request was made, I apologize, did you?
No, we were carrying on a side conversation, which was inappropriate.
Okay. Well.
It's, I blame it on Dean though.
In a, in violation of.
Wow. Okay. Um, did you wanna bring anything forward for the whole board, or?
So, we're just discussing the great configuration, he thinks we beat it to death and I don't know where we're at, so.
Yep. Okay. At our previous meeting, there was a request to return this topic to the board, do you feel that we have satisfied that request?
I still imagine that we have board members in on this case.
Thank you, Board Member Simpson. No, thank you, I mean, that's why we each have a chair at this table, so.
No, I, I think that this is a, one of the most critical charges that we have in front of us.
I would agree. All right. Um, with that, are we okay to move on into the discussion items? Thank you, all right. All right, in the discussion items section, we have the current edition of our annual meeting agenda. And, let me just get all documents relocated, there we go. Dan, do you wanna walk us through that and then we'll, okay?
Yep, sure will. So, I've shared tonight is the draft agenda and this is a status quo agenda, if you will. The, there are a number of things that statutorily must happen at annual meetings and then the board, or the district has some discretion on, on some items. And, and so the one item that will be added that is highlighted there will be a resolution authorizing the purchase of property consistent with the, the piece that was approved tonight. So, prior to that, we'll actually have legal counsel draft that specific resolution similar to the one you had with the, you know, borrowing tonight. It'll be a long resolution and, and so we'll make sure that we have that out and communicated well in advance. But, other than that, it said everything else is, is the, essentially the same order of business that we've had for, you know, several years with regard to the agenda. So, postcards, we do notify every district resident of the meeting and they did, are going out very soon, if they did.
After tonight, we wanted to confirm, make sure there was no surprises.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
When that was my question, is the agenda on postcards?
Yes.
So, is there a link to where they can see the agenda or how, in terms of?
I believe there is a link.
We, we do our normal notices, you know, legal notices that send out to all the various places and then I believe we'll post on the website as well. Yeah, so.
That is one thing that, for this year, is happening as it always has, but may fall into the purview for us to talk about with our community relations committee, since we've invited them to this meeting, to then also backtrack and say, well, how was it announced? And did that capture the right people to be at that meeting and we appropriately take advantage of this as an opportunity to celebrate our awesomeness? Or not, but, or, you know, what is this opportunity that we have and how, so, that is, I thought we were just talking about the postcard thing and it's helpful to think about how that fits in, but for this year, the timing is such that it doesn't really, it, it's more like our committee members this year can observe it than, than weigh in, although I'm sure that there's gonna be people in the room who will have opinions after they attend and, and, you know, wanna think about what goes on at this.
All right, just one other point of information, I have confirmed, Mike Joelko will be present as our parliamentarian as well.
Any other questions? All right. Then we will move on to our second item under discussion items, which is Policy five six one zero, suspension and expulsion. Jeff, did you want to start conversation or did you want?
I can.
Okay.
I've made it clear, you know, in our support meetings, right, that I feel that we need to, we look at our behavior policy, that our suspension expulsion policy is archaic and we know from data that it just doesn't, we're not doing correctly according to data. In twenty-fourteen, actually, the Obama administration, which I sent out earlier to everybody, but it was just a little bit before the meeting, they recommended that you establish a school-wide discipline policy with input from students and families that specifies expectations for behavior and consequences for this behavior and provides ways to use disciplinary incidents to help students learn from and improve their behavior. This policy should include protections for students with disabilities and strong, righteous protections for all students. What I would propose is we put together a committee that includes all stakeholders, board members, administration, teachers, parents, students, and rewrite the whole policy to reflect the views of our community instead of a couple of board members in the policy committee that we just, it's, or fallen in the old faceless one that, that just doesn't work, I don't believe. I think, I haven't seen, I would still, would like to see our suspension expulsion complete data, but I think that we can do better, I think we should do better, and I think the data says that we, we need to do better. So, that's, that would, and, and I would recommend that we take a good year to implement it instead of just sitting down and saying, this is what you're gonna do, 'cause this isn't about me. And, and what we do has to be a living document to say, okay, we tried this, it doesn't work, so let's try this. And you need, everybody needs to buy in, that's why everybody needs to be represented on the committee.
Thank you. Yes, Susan?
Um, I would su- I would support that committee, I would support it to specifically be charged with reviewing the current policy and having discussion on it. It may be something that Susan and Carrie would like to consider for the community committee, although that doesn't include students at this time, so, yeah, probably wouldn't work. Again, I think, I would also say that I would not agree with the statement about the data, if you do look it up in Y-Sesh and you read the articles about today's lessons about, from the teachers and the staff that deals with changes in policy and the, the difficulties and struggles that have occurred within the schools with changes by administration, particularly Madison, that did not involve staff. I, again, would support staff, students, and again, if you wanna read the article, I'll be happy to send it to you. It's called Today's Lesson, Classroom Disorder Increases in Milwaukee, Mass. and After-School Administrators Unveil a New Policy. So, again, we're gonna do a committee, it needs to be representative, it needs to have full board approval and feel comfortable with the structure, and it needs to address things like the statements that were made by Kalim Garah and his experience in the Madison School District after the previous board. I mean, you need to have somebody that has the structure and the enriched knowledge base to do this with all pieces, to evaluate it in a good process and systematically without personal biases. So, I would support it under those circumstances.
Thank you, Susan.
Um, I, I guess I'm personally not convinced that we have a real problem in this area. I understand that none of us like to see suspensions, including our staff, none of us like to see expulsions. But I think we have a lot going on in our schools right now to prevent that, I mean, we do work on behalf of our students. We have the relatively new service delivery model that I think still requires a lot of, that's a major initiative for staff. They're still learning it, they're still growing with it, that's a major factor in student success. We have ongoing PBIS, we do have some restorative practices with an emphasis on equity, culturally relevant responsive teaching strategies, increased meaningful use of technology. And all the reading I've done, which is significant, about restorative justice and putting a focus on that district-wide is that it takes a complete staff buy-in commitment, maybe is a better word, commitment and resources. That really is a major, major initiative and it takes years to implement. I'm personally not in favor of setting up a committee like this at this point because I don't really see the problem. I did print out some information for Y-Sesh, which will show you that we are, our suspensions have, have been, have reduced since two thousand eleven, twelve, we're now sitting at two point three percent suspensions in the year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, which is the most recent year available, that's below the state average of three point nine percent. And it's also below the Madison and Front School District average of three point nine percent, even with their new behavior policy. And then the second attachment shows our individual schools, so you can kinda see how close, close these schools. So, I, I see some improvement here and I'm not therefore seeing a reason that why, I don't see, I, I don't favor changing the policy this point. Yeah, I guess the other thing is, even if we were to establish some kind of committee, I, I would, from what I've read and I, I could send you this, I read the same article Susan did, but I with some other ones, and one in the New York Times Magazine, An Effective But Exhausting Alternative to High School Suspensions, and it was all about restorative justice, and it was very much in favor of it, but it was talking about the pitfalls and the dangers, and I think the dangers in this today's lesson about the reactions in Milwaukee and Madison when they did this too quickly. And I remember reading a lot about this at the time and remember a lot of teachers showed up at a board meeting, very concerned about what they saw as a lack of support. And frankly, when I read through their discipline plan and the amount of documentation teachers have to do if they send a kid out of their classroom, I probably wouldn't do it either, I mean, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work. So, I'm, I'm just saying there are some really good aspects, obviously, to restorative justice and those kinds of practices, to all these things that we're doing now. And I guess I would hesitate to change our policy before we had a plan in place and before we had the supports in place and we knew it was gonna work. Therefore, I really oppose changing anything about our policy, 'cause I don't feel, I do feel like we don't excessively suspend kids. I also think, if we were gonna look at anything, it's more important to look at what do we do with those students when they come back? If they're suspended for a day or two days, we know we can't suspend them for more than five, and most of ours are an average of one when you look at the, I don't remember if that's on, I did read through some of the Y-Sesh, I didn't print all of it, but, you know, if a student has to be suspended, then I think that's when you focus on that student, building a relationship with that student, what's causing the behavior, whatever it is that led to that, how can you help that student? I think it's more important, and when we do that through all these things I just rattled off, that we're working on right now in our schools, I think it's much more important that we keep focused on this and on our strategic plan, which moves us forward in this direction, that we support our staff and support our students doing these things than it is to, to kinda take another turn and take on a whole new initiative of revamping a suspension policy when I don't frankly see a problem with it. I guess that was my other thing, is I don't think the statistics indicate that we do have a problem. I think a lot of it is a matter of staff and resource capacity. I think we keep encouraging, as we have, these other positive things that we'd like to see continue to drop, but, anyway, enough said.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Peter?
I think we could all agree that in an ideal world, there would be no need for suspensions and expulsions. Right? So, as part of a continuous improvement process, why wouldn't we work to that, towards that?
I think we do.
Well, I don't know, we, I, I don't know if we, this doesn't show a trend downward in suspensions or expulsions, for example. I also think it's kinda misleading compared that to the statewide, because if there's Milwaukee and big school districts dominate this.
Are we looking at the same group?
I'm looking at the same data, you know.
It shows two point five to two point three, it does show a trend.
That's statistically insignificant, over five years, there's no, there's no trend in this data.
Well, it's from three, three percent two thousand eleven, twelve to two point three.
That's one, that's one data point here.
This is from DPI.
You could scroll way back.
Yes, it's from DPI and one has to learn how to look at sample sizes, Susan, but please, don't interrupt me, I wasn't done speaking.
Excuse me?
This trend, as you can read it, shows no significant change in our suspension rate, so to say we're working.
Oh, right, stable.
That's right, we're working toward improving that, that's, you know, I mean, in an ideal world, like I said, I think there isn't a reason not to work toward improving suspension expulsion rates. The goal, the question is, is that part of other activities we're doing right now, as Susan brings up? Or is it something that, you know, is that part and parcel of that? Or is it something we have to focus, or is it a priority that we have to work on now? We've seen a lot of expulsions and big increase in expulsions really here, just from our experience as board members in the last several, in the last year over prior years. And I'm wondering if it's not, not the right time to do that. You do see a lot of, now, you talk about Madison, Milwaukee, Madison in particular, we've heard a lot of stories about restorative justice in Madison. You look, there are other districts that have done much better probably, and particularly smaller districts like ours, where you see that there have, they have had successful implementation of restorative justice. But, and so I don't know what the right path is going forward at this moment, but I think it is something that we should be on a radar and it's a discussion that we absolutely should be continuing. Is there a better way to manage discipline in our schools? Is there a room for improvement in suspension and expulsion rates? I think there is, and how we get, how we work toward a goal of zero, which I think is, would be ideal. What's the priority of that and how we get there, that's the question I have at this point.
And, and I'm not recommending overnight change, I'm recommending a long committee process and maybe at the end of this committee process, the committee decides, we're doing everything great, there's no room for improvement. And then, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean there's gonna be wholesale changes, it may mean we tweak something. It just depends on, as a value, as a community, and if you wanna look at data points, this, this is twenty fifteen, sixteen, we kicked out three kids. It's about, this, last year we kicked out six, so we doubled our expulsion. So, is that not a, a data point worth considering? Three, and half of those kids were people of color. We, we are, we are just losing, I mean, we're, we're, we're playing into that and we need to, we need to fix that.
Susan, and, sorry, Susan and then Carrie, okay?
Well, I, I was just gonna say, I, I just think we need to be cognizant again of staff capacity. We, the committee engagement committee is taking some staff time, and, and Joyce. The facilities committee is a way bigger charge, that's, that's going to take a lot of staff time in general. I think we just need to think about that when we think about forming a committee, I don't, again, think this is the time, 'cause I, I don't think the figures show that it's necessary. This, I consider this an average year to have six, that's, we don't usually have, I think we're close to that.
So, the data, data point doesn't matter, unless it says what you want.
So, we'll have to see if next year, no, no, but, that, no, no, the data points I looked at didn't go through this year 'cause they're not on Y-Sesh, so I didn't compare it.
We did.
Right, and so that, that was an expulsion, I was looking at suspensions, not expulsions, okay?
Well, I don't have, I don't have additions or stuff.
'Cause I thought, I thought that's what we were mostly, I got the idea that's what we're talking about, but if we're talking, we are talking about both.
I think they go hand in hand.
So, anyway, I think, again, it's a capacity issue and I just, I'm gonna say again, I think it's, it's a huge undertaking to involve a lot of staff time, it's a valuable one, but it's a huge undertaking and I don't see doing that in a year when we've got a major facilities issue that we have to look at. It's gonna take a lot of time and effort, I just think it's misplaced, I think we continue to work at what we're working at, sorry.
Thank you, Carrie.
What I heard earlier that Jeff said was to propose a committee to develop a new policy. And as we talked about this a little bit more, what you then changed to was to review what we're doing and maybe we don't need a new policy. So, if we're reviewing, I'm wondering if that falls in the purview of the policy committee itself and that the policy committee may choose to have as part of its work an opportunity to invite in for a discussion the stakeholders that you mentioned, specifically from the community or some students, to guide the, of review of this policy specifically. But, that is a different request than what you first came to us with, which is proposing a group to work on developing something entirely new. So, I, I guess I'm looking for clarification really on, on what you're thinking.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you have to tear everything down that we're doing, 'cause I don't think we're horrible. I think that data shows there are new ways, better ways to handle things. And I think that a committee, we could decide as a community, 'cause I think the biggest thing we do is we need to build a community. And that's what we do. And that's what we do- we need to do with these kids that we're kicking out, suspending and expelling. They have to- we have to let them figure out a way to make them part of our community. And tell them they want it. And it- it might mean just a tweak and it might mean a ten percent shift, it might mean a seventy percent, I don't know.
Because one thing that I think is really excellent about the policy committee, from what I observed of it, was the ability to- to side by side look at other policies in other districts. So, I- I mean, partially it's just figuring out, is that a priority for us right now to do that? But I think that could be an achievable thing. I mean, uh, you know, it's sort of just trying to put a timeline to that. Is that something that competes this fall? Maybe not, but within this next year? Or, you know, when would that fall within the policy committee's work? To do a thorough, um, vetting of, well, what's ours and what else is out there? And how does ours compare? Because I- I think in the discussion, it was useful to me to hear other policies in other districts are influenced by their resources, by their staffing, by their culture, I mean, other things that sometimes just don't- don't pick up and drop down here. Um, but that would be a useful thing to know. I- if what you're saying is it's time to review, are we keeping up to date? Are- are we doing the things here that other schools are doing? And- and are we still looking at that? And I think sometimes if our reference group isn't broad enough and you're just looking at our policy and another policy that's very similar to it in Neola or something like that, you're- it's- it's a different kind of thing. And what I hear you asking for is a broader reference group? Is that kind of what you're asking for?
Yeah, I think- I think this has gotta go beyond three people on a policy committee. But I think it's about, what does our community want to do? You know, what do we want to be as a district? How do we want to do it? I mean, districts that have fully restored- put restorative justice in, it helps close the achievement gap. Is that something we want? Or do we want to talk about facilities? Is that more important? I mean, that's- that's why I'm not saying wholesale changes. I'm saying we get together and discuss and see where we're at. And I understand that we have capacity issues, but this is- this is an important thing. I mean, it's an important thing for the seventy-eight kids that gets suspended and the three that got expelled. I mean, this is important things. How could we- could we do better on that? And I think we can do better.
And so I was still sort of listening for what is the way to approach this?
That's why, I think the way is a committee with a wide range of community and different stakeholders, so nobody feels it got forced on them. Everybody has a say in the- in the thing. And maybe, you know, we have- we have staff on and they'll be like, hey, we can't do that, that's not- we're not in on that. Then they'll say, okay, then we'll have to, you know, what are you in? You know, we can all just work together instead of us telling them what our policy is. And I think students and parents have to be involved too. And not just come in and talk to us on the committee for a minute. Like, I think you, you know, as Jeff said earlier, you can put together a great team of thinkers. We have a lot of intelligent kids in our community, in our schools, that can really help us set discipline- discipline codes, so.
Thank you. I'm gonna just ask if there are any further comments or questions for Jeff? Yes, or for the board?
Well, I- I guess I- I would just say it's something I might be willing to think about next year. I'm personally just not worried. And we're not- it's not a fraction tight anyway, so we could bring this to a close pretty soon. Because I guess, well, I guess the only thing would be to decide if we want to take any action. Um, personally, where I sit is we just don't have time to do it this year. And I'm not saying the whole issue's not important, it's always an important issue. But I just think we're working on so many things that are going in that same direction. Facilities is one of them, because that crowding contributes to problems. I- I just think we can't take on something that is as big as what you're describing.
Expulsions reduce our crowding problems.
Thank you, uh, Dan, if you wanna take a moment.
Sure. Um, so first of all, to answer, you know, your questions, Peter, and what you said, you know, Jeff, we're- the answer is, um, are we working on this? Yes. Can we do better? Yes, absolutely. So, in- to put it in perspective about what the problem is and then how are we addressing it? Okay, I appreciate the information you shared with the board, Jeff, and that came from the administration. And I agree with every one of those guidelines. I think our administrative team does as well. But I understand those guidelines are to fight the problem of graduation rates, okay? And, um, and so we look at what is our issue with graduation rate? Okay, our graduation rate is over ninety-five percent. It needs to be a hundred. No question, there's room for improvement. But it's a small enough gap that Dr. Bronstein, his team, know exactly who every one of those individuals are and that five percent who, you know, or less that haven't made it. And we're working extremely hard, okay, um, at addressing that issue. And so when you look at the key recommendations, number, the first bullet point, creating positive climates and so on. PBIS has been an integral part of this district and our school improvement plans, you know, for many years. And it continues to be a priority. Uh, secondly, ensuring that school discipline is applied fairly without regard to students' race, color, national orig- origin, religion, disability, and so on. No question, um, the equity work i- is critical. We do have gaps in that area. We're aware of them and we are working really hard in trying to close those gaps. So no question, we need to do better, but we're aware and- and, um, and we know what our data says on that. Third bullet point, when working with law enforcement agencies, ensuring that partnerships are structured, implemented to avoid violation of student civil rights, student privacy laws, and so on. Again, something that we are working very hard on. We just added a second resource officer. You're gonna get an opportunity to meet our two resource officers at our next board meeting and hear from them exactly what their role is. They both are very well trained. They understand the separation of law enforcement versus the school administrator's job when it comes to discipline. And again, that's something that we are working on, that we can do better as far as to make sure we're all on the same page, exactly how we use those individuals as a resource, um, so that, you know, um, we do have a separation. But that is a really critical import, um, um, piece. I think we do a very good job of it, but we can strive to improve as well. Uh, the next, providing professional development and training opportunities. That has been a- a huge area of emphasis in this district before I've been here and since as well, with regard to training staff and cultural responsive practices, with regard, being back to the PBIS. Um, in fact, you know, as an ongoing thing, you're aware, tomorrow, our entire administrative team, all five principals, as well as our district office staff, um, is involved in a year-long work, um, on leading equity. And we are absolutely committed. Can we do better? Yes. Must we do better? Yes. Is not by any means finished work, but it is something that we take seriously and are striving to improve. The next bullet point that Jeff referenced with regard to the policy, um, and that's the one place that I'm in agreement with regard to the policies need to be in place to make sure that we are, there are strong due process protections for students with disabilities and otherwise. Our policy has that, okay? And, um, and we have to have state statutes that do protect, um, the, you know, have the due process, you know, pieces built into it. Not every state has that necessarily. Again, the policy is not the problem. Now, the implementation, there is still human judgment involved. And that's part of what's in our policy, is that our staff has to use good judgment when it comes to making those decisions. Okay, and that's something that we continually need to review and- and we do. Our administrative teams talk about that all the time and with our staff, about how we implement discipline. Um, and without question, there's times that- that we probably, um, in hindsight, maybe have learned from things and- and we do. We, and- and we learn from that and adjust. As Susan said, a big part of the- the piece with regard to discipline is then what happens afterwards. Um, and, you know, the restorative practices are certainly a part of it. As you know, we've started that, I think we're- we're, uh, coming along, but by no means to where we need to be at this point. Uh, so we do need to commit, maintain that commitment. Uh, the last two points, you know, having students engaged and so on and the cultural awareness. So all those things can't argue with, no question. My point is, it's not a policy issue. It's a practice issue that we need to continue to improve. It's on that chart be on the wall. We are committed, half the things on that strategic plan are committed to our equity work and as well as our teaching and learning. So I do think, in- in kind of relation to a conversation we had earlier about communication and data for the board, you've never seen this data as a board. You've done your own research, you've seen pieces of it as we've reported out on strategic plans and school improvement plans. So I suggest that that'd be the first step, is let's actually look at our data. DPI stuff is two years old, we've got our own data besides that and we, um, it have- and we, so we glad to share that. Um, and that's where the conversation needs to begin. I think it's very premature to say we need to start forming a committee to address the policy, that we don't know that the policy's the problem. I think that the issue of improvement is our practices. And- and so I would ask that we start with that. Let's talk more as a board, uh, with our administrators about what is it that we're doing? And then from there, you know, if after that you really believe that policy's an issue, well, let's- let's address it, okay? But I- I think we need to have some more discussion and information first.
Peter.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I mean, it's not a policy issue. It would be implemented in the end in policy if we would make some significant change. But that's, but you're right, it's not a, it's an education issue, it's not a policy, um, issue. My question would be, what do you take as measures of success for PBIS, for example?
Sure. I mean, ultimately, it comes to student success, you know, all those data points, graduation rates. Um, and then we keep talking now about college and career ready. And we're still working on how do we best measure that? What does that mean? Does it mean, you know, a post-secondary success, um, you know, and so on? And, um, and, you know, student achievement scores are part of that, you know? We've talked about how that's a piece that we have to look at, but it's not the be-all and-all. So I think all those ultimately, um, and then the things that are harder to measure, you know, that student engagement piece, is something that we're continually, you know, working on. So I think it's not a short answer to how do we measure it. I think there are multiple measures and we need to improve those as well.
Well, I think there are PBS, they is connected to PBIS efforts as well. So there are some, I mean, in the buildings, they are measuring specific things, like whether it's losing attendance through different, you know, there are a lot of different things they are measuring, even if we, I can't rattle them off off the top of my head, but I've seen some.
I guess the question I have is, I feel that all students can learn. So what are we gonna do about these eighty-one kids? And I don't see us, I think we can do better for these eighty-one kids than we are doing right now.
I think we all agree. That's not, we need to keep working on it. I guess my point is, just changing the policy's not gonna make a difference. What happens in the schools is what makes a difference.
Right, but changing the poli- I mean, a lot of times we get, well, policy says I have to suspend. Policy says I have to expel.
No, it doesn't.
Art doesn't say that, yeah.
We don't have to, we could have a zero suspension rate based on our policy.
Right, we also have expel- expulsion rate because they follow the policy.
No, it's because we've made recommendations that we believe are in the best interest, okay, of the school.
Right. Right, due to our policies.
No. I mean, policy just simply gives the authority.
Right.
You, as board members, are the decision makers. You don't have to expel anyone.
Right. I've tried, but, uh.
And here, here's our record, I mean, it's steady at point one percent, except one year we had none.
And it'll be point one again next year. When you go from three to six, that's still point one percent.
To your population.
But there's, but, but, I guess I don't see the sense of urgency for these eighty-one kids.
Well, there is. And that's, maybe it's a communication issue that we talked about.
Yeah, I'm not sure there are even eighty-one separate kids. I mean, not to diminish it, but like, I mean, there are even incidents that could be someone's same kid.
We know what happens to these kids, right?
But I- I wouldn't, I would have, I guess when you said something about what, we're failing these eighty-one kids because they're not learning, I don't- I don't make that assumption. I don't think just because a student is- is suspended, because I think we do work with them, I think maybe we'd like to hear more about, okay, what extra efforts? I mean, if that's something you're interested in. I- I think that our, I would not ever assume that just because a child is suspended in our district, they're not learning. Because I think they do. And I would hope that if, again, as I said when I was talking about the things we do, I think looking at what you do with them when they come back, and similarly, when they're expelled, they come back. There are records on the DPI Wise Dash two about, uh, we're one of the only, the only district in our elective conference that provides educational services when we expel a student. So we do that, most schools don't.
But it's not the same.
I'm just saying we do that. And when they come back to our school, which most of them do, if they're expelled prior to their senior year, if you look at the reported da- data, I'm not talking anecdotally, most of them do come back. And, um, so they continue their education. So I- I just don't think you can jump to those assumptions based on some statistics. I mean, I'm not doubting that there are issues with it, but I'm just, I- I just think that's a false thing to say. And I don't- I don't let that go to imply that we're taking eighty-one kids and we're not educating them because they were suspended once. I just don't think that's fair.
And I'm not, and again, this isn't me saying anybody in our school district is not doing their job. I'm just saying, I don't know that, we need to give them the ability to do better. I'm taking the responsibility on us, which is why I want to change that.
Yeah. And you have, by the board adopting the strategic plan, by the board adopting resources, by the board approving positions and hires. Those are the things that you do as a board that support this work that our teams are doing.
Because I mean, I would like to see the suspension rates, like, how many people have, how many kids have been suspended more than once? Right? Because if you get suspended more than once, that means what we're doing doesn't work, right? Punitive damage, yeah. And so what are we doing differently for this kid to make sure that under our strategic plan, it's all kids, right? What are we doing differently for these kids that, you know? And- and it's probably our fault, I'm taking blame, it's our fault for not giving them that. And I want to make sure we give them everything they need, which is what a committee would, what I feel a committee would also be part of, saying, okay, we can't, we're not doing it because we don't have the ability to do that. So we need another position, or we need to do this, or we need to send people to this training, you know? Which, then that would be on us. And I'm fully, I'm willing to take that responsibility, so.
Um, briefly, if you could, just, thank you.
I, again, I really appreciated the discussion that we had tonight. And so on that basis, I would support further communication with the board about our, about the current practices that we use, the resources that are available for us to help students. And I know that Krista and Paul and the rest of the administrative staff have already addressed some of that, but maybe specifically with us. And if the board is really interested in that, then based on whatever you recommend, we could schedule workshop time for that. Um, if you really want to hear about this, then you gotta commit yourself as a board member to listening and doing the research before you come to this meeting, because we're taking staff time to- to support us. So, um, I would look to administration, particularly looking at the numbers that are here with us tonight and the experiences that they have with students, what they would recommend that we should do as a board going forward.
Thank you.
I- I guess if we were gonna ask for that and have a workshop, um, we would need some clarity on what we're asking because we just had a workshop on the strategic plan and an update. And we did get, we did get cut short on our buildings. And I would have liked to have, that's why I really do support having a whole separate presentation of that, because I think it wasn't fair to the building administrators who weren't able to have their full time and who didn't have time to ask questions. But we did just get a report on some of the goals and what they're doing. And so I'm not sure what more people want to hear. If you want to focus in specifically on, okay, for the kids who were suspended last year, just give us a night. Sometimes I think just a conversation, I've just been talking about that, about just, because I think sometimes it's just we don't understand what happens when a student does come back. What's kind of the normal procedure? I mean, is there some extra attention paid to that student or what? If- if that's the kind of thing people want, I just think we would need to be clear of what we're asking to have presented. Because I feel like we get a lot of this presented and then I hear a couple months later, we never hear about this. And it doesn't seem quite fair, so.
Thank you. Notes have been taken extensively. Thank you. Um, I would also just like to thank everyone for participating in the discussion and honoring Jeff's request for the discussion item. So, thank you. All right, that takes us to future meetings. They are posted in your board docs. If anybody wants me to read them.
Okay.
All right. I can, all right.
Hi, I'd like to move to adjourn at eight fifty-six.
Can- can just, I just wanna, and Joyce, I think you just correct that.
Yes.
The date of the, um, personnel meeting?
For, is not the?
Is, um, October twenty-sixth. Yeah, it's late.
I'm sorry.
It's not October fifth or whatever we had before.
Oh, it says October, Frank.
We're, so we're good. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Let's finish it.
It's correct in board docs, it's all correct, there's nothing to correct.
Thank you.
All right, let's go back to our adjournment then. Thank you.
Second?
Who's second in here, please? Thank you.
All those in favor?
Hi, guys.
All those opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.